Hey.
Guy in uniform.
Monday.
Something to do.
Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call.
Here.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
My lady.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Huns.
Here.
Please join me in.
By allegiance to the five and the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for approving the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Huns.
Yes.
Public forum, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Any public comment? See, there are some people online, any public comment from anybody online? Okay.
That's me.
Uh, consent agenda.
Come out.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Huns.
Yes.
Five A, consideration of estimated Seventy Third Street Iowa Communications Network Fiber Relocation Costs.
Go move.
Second.
AJ.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as part of the construction of Seventy Third Streets, uh, ICN will need to relocate portion of their fiber, which the city has rights to use of some of the fiber strands, I believe it's about a dozen. Uh, we also own the conduit, there's a 2020 agreement that breaks down how those costs for relocation are allocated, with fifty percent of the cost for the conduit being on the city and then the proportional amount for the number of strands affected. So, um, the estimated costs for the work which would be done by ICN to the city is eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And it'd be a reimbursement for the work done by ICN, uh, and be allocated to the Seventy Third Street Reconstruction Project. Uh, as part of that, Andy and Jason are looking as well how to utilize the city's fiber strands, the network does run through all the major corridors of Windsor Heights, so there is an opportunity to uh, do some upgrades potentially in the future to our traffic signals utilizing those, uh, potentially lower the cost by using the existing fibers opposed to transmitting, um, any wifi data through that, so, uh, depending on where that exploration goes, that may be something you see in a future ERP, uh, for the following year.
Can I just ask a question? So does this, will we have to do the same on the opposite side of Seventy Third when we re- when we reconstruct that? Will we also have to move stuff there or is that not known yet?
This is for the entire, uh, Seventy Third Street University to Hickman, you're talking about south of university?
Talking, yes.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, there would be one signal down there yet, so I think there is fiber that runs as part of that, so there's potential costs there. Wouldn't say that for sure unless Justin knows, but.
Okay. There, and it runs all the way down it. So, this was happening, it wasn't going in the straight line, it disappeared out of the street and it came back. We had to deal with, uh, a university too. So, not known at this time, I guess, answer your question.
That's all in.
Other questions? Further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Sears.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Huns.
Yes.
Five B, consideration of food truck change order, AJ.
Can I, uh, jump in real quick? We had, uh, someone did message in afterwards about a comment they wanted to give during public forum.
Okay. Um, you're done with roll call? We're good on five A?
I think yes.
Okay. All right, um. Who?
Uh, Jan.
Okay. Jan?
Yes.
Uh. Go ahead.
I just have a quick comment. I live at seventy fifteen Sunset Terrace in Windsor Heights, and we have already noticed Seventieth Street is increasing in traffic. And of course, we'll get busier throughout the year, and I am asking for consideration of flashing lights or even better is stop sign at the crosswalk of Del Metro and Seventieth. I feel like it would calm traffic and be a lot safer, a lot of people cross Seventieth that way. So, I'd like to see that discussed, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jan, did you send us an email today?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Obviously, it's the first day, um, we're going to, I think staff is going to be reevaluating things as, as, uh, construction moves forward, and so as far as, you know, safety measures, they're going, they will definitely evaluate things, and if, I think if that's justified, they will discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Five B, consideration of food truck change order.
I'll approve.
Second.
AJ.
Adam, if you could, uh, pull up the revised with the new concept and perhaps unmute Nate, who's under the BMI iPhone, uh, on Zoom, I think as well. Nate, you're welcome to hop in at any point if I miss something important, but, uh, when we, uh, started discussing budget earlier this year and moving forward with Colby Park Phase One project, uh, we agreed to take a look at moving forward with the food truck plaza as well to try to limit the amount of, uh, uh, of summer years that the main portion of the park would be under construction. Uh, we also then, uh, updated our urban renewal plan, uh, and have reallocated funds from leftover University Avenue Reconstruction, so there's a funding source for this. At the time, the cost estimate to do the flat work, uh, for the food truck plaza, which would be the concrete and then the underground work was, uh, approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We've gone through, uh, some committee conversations about, uh, the design that was, I think, maybe ninety percent proposed at the time, uh, took a second look at the electrical needs for the food truck plaza, also looked at some of the markings to designate pedestrian areas and the food truck areas as well as, uh, tried to add some greenery to this area to kind of more seamlessly, uh, turn it into a pedestrian-friendly area, uh, kind of all these design components have led to, uh, the final design that's, uh, pulled up here, uh, shown on sheet D there. Uh, the, uh, contractor's proposed price is the two hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, so that is above the original engineer's estimate of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or less. Uh, it would, no part of this is, uh, designing for the future there where the tennis courts, pickleball courts are to the immediate west. There'll be a junction box for electric as well as some conduit run that will serve that area as part of the work, uh, that would be proposed as the food truck plaza, so that's about twenty-five thousand dollars in savings for that future phase that's incorporated into this, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Some of the other changes, uh, that are proposed to the food truck plaza from the original design concept or some, uh, reworking of that entire southern curb on the parking lot, since there's a number of ADA access points there. Um, that curb is supposed to be completely redone to incorporate those access points seamlessly, and that would mean when you reconstruct or overlay the parking lot in the future, uh, that curb, uh, being reworked could be avoided as well. Uh, raised planting beds, uh, between the parking lot and the food trucks, uh, are incorporated in there, so there's eleven additional trees in those raised planting beds, uh, as part of this final design. Uh, and then most of the conversation, most of the cost increase, um, uh, shown in this plan is the additional electrical outlets. So the plan is to retrofit the three brick pedestals that are already there uh, and add two thirty amp, one fifty amp, and a hundred and ten amp outlet on each of those, uh, so that would, uh, with the additional power that would be run to them, that would allow each of those thirty amps to be used or thirty amp plus a fifty amp, uh, or some combination thereof without, uh, tripping a breaker, uh, and then there would be a new breaker box that would serve the tennis courts and the pickleball courts as well as the food truck plaza located in this vicinity, uh, so if there was a breaker that got tripped, it would be immediately accessible, um. So. We- we've talked to Caleb, uh, with, um, engineering firm, Blue Stone Engineering, as well as Bolton and Menk, and we're pretty sure that this should meet, uh, almost all the needs that we would have out there for for food trucks. There is some diversity of electrical use by food trucks, uh, as far as plug outlet types and the number or the amount of ampage needed. A lot of food trucks tend to use their own, um, generator as well, uh, the noise issue is the primary concern on, on letting folks do that, so this would provide an alternative, uh, in most instances from a generator to, to kind of a plug-in, uh, service which would eliminate that noise concern. Uh, so substantial portion of the cost is, is allocated to, to getting that electrical service upgraded and then adding these additional outlets and incorporating them in those brick pedestals. Um, retaining those brick pedestals, as I understood, it was kind of a priority as far as this redesigned project. Uh, and then as I noted, um, this would serve the, uh, future tennis court as well. Uh, so at this point, uh, we'd like to move forward with getting this construction done yet this year, uh, hopefully completed by early or mid-July, uh, is still the potential goal. If council chooses to approve this, uh, I guess I would recommend that we do move forward with it, we have a funding source at this point, uh, we can get the work done, we have a contractor on site. Uh, if, uh, council feels differently, you have the option of not approving the change order and instead incorporating this into a future phase of the park improvements, um, and at that point you could, uh, uh, rebed the project, uh, potentially see some savings if you have a, a different contractor that's, uh, a little more hungry on that. Uh, but we would, uh, potentially be at risk on that ninety-nine thousand dollar Prairie Meadows grant, uh, that is outstanding, and we didn't expect to see an award, uh, announcement one way or another mid-July of this year. Uh, if we don't move forward with the flat work this year, the, uh, the Prairie Meadows grants, uh, would need to be expended by July, I believe it's July first of next year, so that wouldn't leave us much of a window of an opportunity to get this work done in time to meet the grant requirements if we got that, so. Again, the funding source for this is the five hundred thousand dollar repurposing of the University Avenue Bond proceeds that was previously done, uh, it's an allowable cost in the urban renewal plan, and we have that ninety-nine thousand dollar grant application outstanding. Happy to answer any questions council might have. Nate is also online, if you have any design questions as well as Justin.
I think my only concern, and I wasn't, um, available, I left the meeting early because of, uh, a previous or another meeting, but um, just the trees concern me and where they're located along with the food trucks, because we're the way that we're doing it, we only have two areas where our food trucks can go that have the trailers potentially, and you can't really tell here, but in one of the previous pictures that we had, where the trees are, it's kind of like in the middle there where I, I think it could be better, there, there could be other things that could be put there or if we even have to have the trees there like that, um, because that would give us a little bit more control to, to allow more than just two of the food trucks with trailers in, because they would have a little bit more room now. They would go right up to a tree, so, you know, we could kind of move them around a little bit easier. Um, I did notice that some of the newer food trucks that are coming out are doing the trailers because they're a little bit cheaper to reconfigure, which is probably not, again, a big deal on a Tuesday night in July, but, uh, when you're up against some, uh, other things for like fall festival with food trucks, it's a little, it'll take a little bit more on whoever is doing the fall festival to really look at the food trucks that are coming and make sure that we know the trailer, you know, who has trailers, we can only have two trailers, so it, it just comes a little bit more on us or whoever is planning the event. So that's my only concern, which is probably easily looked at after this approval to kind of.
Uh, Nate, could you remind us what kind of curbs are designed on, uh, those planting beds and, uh, kind of the turning radius, give us a refresher, I guess, on the turning radius work that you guys did as part of this?
Sure, yeah, so the actual curved areas, uh, don't extend into the area around the trees. So if you did have somebody that came in, had a trailer, and, um, you happen to have two trailers, so, uh, the occupied space on the far east end, um, already had a trailer and you're trying to get one more in there. If somebody needed to maneuver around and use some of that planting bed, uh, to get parked, they could. Uh, that said, after going through the turning studies, uh, our official stance on this is that getting a trailer parked in any one of those spaces two through six will be a challenge. Not saying it can't be done, but, uh, that's gonna take, um, probably quite a bit of back and forth to get parked. So that space at the front on the far east end, I would designate that as a trailer spot, and the rest I would designate as, uh, normal food truck.
And eliminating the planting beds, would that help create some additional space for the trailers then?
Um, oops, sorry, I don't know, was I muted there or did you catch that?
Uh, we, yeah, we didn't catch anything there to address that.
Okay, um, it's looking like I need to unmute on two different buttons, so, um, can you repeat the question for me real quick?
Uh, the elimination or the reduction of the planting beds, would that help, uh, make trailer access easier?
Uh, that's gonna be highly dependent on how many other food trucks are parked in there at the same time, because those are barriers just as much as those planters would be. So for instance, if you're talking about, uh, let's say you're talking about space four, there's a planting bed behind that, but you'd still have a food truck potentially in front of that as well as those pedestals.
Adam, could you zoom in to the map a little bit perhaps?
Would it be worth considering, um, adding the planters after, like, get the work done without the planters? And let's get some experience with this, since this isn't something that we can go see another community that has this necessarily. And then later, maybe as part of like the pickleball court project, add in the planters if.
The only potential concern I could see on that is these planting beds are not designed to be watered, um, so they're not plant, they're not elevated planters off of the cement, if I recall correctly, they're, I mean, they're, they drain into the soil, and so you could probably, you could certainly add planters after the fact, just this, then you're fighting the same thing we fought with the CEC planters of trying to keep them watered and the planting material alive in there as opposed to potentially the more drought-resistant plantings that I think that they had more permanently in these. That's the only concern I could think of on that, but otherwise, that could certainly work, I would think.
I think it's also a question of just, um, what's, what's more important here, uh, and I think that's a discussion that, um, you guys all need to have together just as far as when you get a, uh, you have, I don't know, four or five days a year when you have food trucks out here, um, what do you want it to be the other three hundred and sixty? Three hundred and sixty-one days of the year.
I understand that, but it's also, this is, you know, we put a lot of time and work into this, and so to add more to our plate on an already full plate is kind of a lot when, when we take on as much as we do, um, and then my concern is the growth of the trees. How are they gonna grow? Because, I mean, let's face it, I get hit in the head every time I walk down university, so yeah, that's, it's a concern of mine is, are we gonna be? How are we going to handle ma- maintenance of them?
Yeah, so the tree species that was specified as, uh, American elm variety, so the branching is a very upright branching habit to get those branches up and out of the way and, and, uh, provide good shade for the area.
Native council, move forward with the, um, the food truck plaza here this evening, uh, with the condition that, uh, the planting beds be removed or modified to make trailer access easier, uh. You envision that would be a change order, uh, that would be fairly cost neutral, or how would you suggest we proceed if we tried to approve it this evening?
I think if you were to, if you were wanting to do a couple of modifications, I think we could do some things that would be relatively, uh, cost neutral. Um, if you were getting rid of the planting beds, you'd be adding more concrete. Um, so it's just a question of you know, how much are we really saving the contractor if, if they're having to pour some additional concrete, but then not having to add the, use the extra form work, you know, because we're boxing out those planter areas. Um, I think you'd probably see an add, but it wouldn't, wouldn't be entirely significant in comparison to the whole project. Or the whole change order, I should say.
So I'm, I'm gonna, um, just gonna weigh in here and give some thoughts. I, um, was also thinking about this when I was walking through Colby Park yesterday. One, I think we need more trees for shade out there, especially in the summer when you sit out there and we don't have a ton of shade, um, um, but I also, um, of the mindset that I understand that there's a lot of work that goes into the events, but I'm wondering if that there's a more prudent way to look at when somebody makes an application, they indicate whether or not they're a truck or a trailer or something like that as a means to manage the, um, uh, the trucks that are coming in or acceptance of those trucks, and I don't know how you, how you all do that today, but is there, you know, a system or a process that, you know, we can allow for two, and once those slots are filled, then those are filled, and that sort of thing, as opposed to building it to fit an event, having the space fit? Or, you know, do what's most cost-effective here in, in the space. Throwing it out there, um, for a discussion. I mean, I, I get that there's all the, all the different pieces, but I think we have to think about the space not fitting an event, but the event's fitting the space.
Susan, do you have a sense of how many you have that are trailers?
Last year we had three. And, you know, we're, the other thing is, okay, so right now, there's, there's more food trucks than trailers, but it's easier to retrofit a trailer, so are we going to be switching back then? And then are, you know, like, now that food trucks are more common and more out there and?
But that doesn't mean that a trailer can't be brought up and dropped off, right, into that food truck location?
I think that that is the case. You can only fit a trailer at the number one and the number six.
Well, attached to a vehicle, correct?
As far as turning radiuses to get them in, even if they drop it and leave, that's the problem.
Well, but how does the food truck get in and out of there then?
Because they're less space.
They're not as long.
They're not as long.
Hmm.
So you're talking like a twelve-foot trailer with a big truck, you know, then you've got that whole line versus a food truck, which is?
Part of the issue is there's no uniformity between food trucks and the trailers. You could get one of those little ice cream trucks on one, if you have like five, and if you're looking at five and six, they're in the far left. If the little tiny food truck, uh, ice cream thing pulled into five, there'd probably be room for a food truck trailer there. But if you get veggie thumpers, which is a full-size minibus or a full-size school bus, and that's probably gonna take up the entire spot there and make it difficult for a trailer. So logistical-wise, I can certainly appreciate what you're saying, um, there is a trade-off between the shade and the July sun or sun, um, and trying to run the logistics for these events and not really knowing what type of food trucks might show up and what they look like. Balancing priorities.
So in the event that we got to a point where we had a bunch of non-conforming things for those spaces, can we just use the side to the north as like the overflow, oversized parking for this one event where there's extra?
South side of school street?
No, like the.
Where the currently, where we currently put food trucks for events.
Then we're taking away parking.
Yep.
That was the only.
Wouldn't rather do that for that one time rather than not.
That was, it's a good point. One of the, I mean, we kind of talked that through a little bit, but.
We're never gonna have an ideal situation for every event. I mean, it's just the, just the reality of, and this is a very different changing demographic. I was at an event this weekend where there were, um, food trucks the size of literally like a large porta potty, like a handicap-sized porta potty, to ones that were, you know, sixteen feet long. So you've got, to your point of a bus versus a stall, and I think that you're gonna continue to see them probably be minimized and and maximized from the perspective of how much you can fit in and what you, you know, how you can, how to make it most cost-effective, so. Um, I just, we're never gonna know what that answer is, I think, and so just for us being, you know, as nimble as we can be and, um, I think we have to create the space how we want it, how we want it to look and feel, as opposed to how we want a food truck to fit in a space.
I guess then, should it be called the food truck alley, or should it be called a walking path with some food trucks that are allowed on it? You know, I mean, it's the food truck alley, but like for, for me, and, and who knows how many other events this will bring in, you know, the fact that we have this here now, who knows what other, we're opening up the park to others coming in. So that's, that's another thing that I think about. It's not just the Fall Festival or Windsor Wonderland, or, you know, it's what other events will now be coming in because of this food truck alley that we can, you know, promote the city and whatever.
Right, but it's still gonna be the food truck alley, whether or not it has this or we add a, we don't put a tree somewhere, I mean, I think it's still gonna be called that, it's still gonna have that capacity, and if you have to put more in, you know, you, or if you need to utilize that extra space, you take out some parking. I mean, we do it today. It's not.
Can I ask a question of Nate? Uh, how, Nate, how, how high are those, um, the planters? How tall are they? Sorry?
It's a four-inch planter curb.
Okay. Four-inch planter curb. One of the things that we talked about in the park project meetings was, um, adding a little bit more of a barrier between cars and where people are sitting with their backs to vehicles as they're listening to music or watching the movie. Um, and, you know, having this curb there would help somebody who accidentally puts their car in drive and drives forward versus backing out of their parking spot, or, you know, it adds a little bit more protection to when there's not food trucks there. Um, I think it's worth considering too.
Okay. Well. Um. Staff has presented two choices to you, and there was a motion, uh, but the motion was not for either one. Does council have a motion on one of staff's recommendations or a modified motion based upon the discussion uh, related to the concerns that, uh, Susan raised or?
Teresa, you had the motion?
Yeah, I would just, um, move to approve as recommended the first one by Adam without the, without changing, um, the design, but with the, the draft design is that?
Yeah, I guess the, I drafted it as just approval of what has been presented here this evening. I, I presume the potential conflict might have been in the price, uh, not necessarily the planter design, so I was trying to offer, um, alternatives to get back down to that two hundred and thirty thousand dollar price, which would be then reject the change order, uh, or come back with a revision to that change order to eliminate some of those electrical, electrical components that are driving a lot of that increase in price, so. Um, you could also do a change order to this change order to adjust those planters or eliminate some of those planters, but, um.
Now you've confused us all. You can just.
Two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, uh, for the design as presented to try to accomplish it by July is, is what was.
That's my motion. Who made the second? I don't know who did.
Who made the second? I don't know who did.
Good.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion or concerns or? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiers?
No.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Five C consideration of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four governing flood planning and management. AJ?
Uh, staff has been working with John Callen with J E O who helped us with the flood resiliency study. About a year and a half back. Uh, one of the recommendations from the flood resiliency study was to join the. Uh, community rating system program, uh, which would offer residents in Windsor Heights that are within the hundred year floodplain. Uh, some proportional discount depending on cities' actions to their flood insurance. Uh, and so through our conversations, we've been targeting about a ten to fifteen percent reduction in flood insurance for these residents. By taking some steps administratively, uh, as well as some public education steps. Uh, so what we have here tonight is kind of our second action step following those conversations. The first was meeting with the D N R. Uh, and kind of going back and, and getting all of our previous floodplain permits in order and submitted to the D N R. Uh, now we have an updated ordinance, uh, that. Adds in language that's proposed by the D N R and FEMA. Uh, the most substantial change to that is if you are in the hundred year floodplain. You would need to elevate your building two, two feet out of that floodplain. That's your free board base. Uh, in order to minimize the potential for flooding of your building or harden it to that two foot level. So example would be our new salt shed, which is in the floodplain. Andy and Jason have been working on that designed to harden that building so that there's the floodgate. Uh, that would make sure that it's at least two feet above that hundred year floodplain where water could permeate in there. Uh, other examples would be like the Sears building. Um, there could be some revisions to any new building that would be designed there to get it further out of that floodplain. Uh, and then of course you've got about twenty five, thirty residents, uh, homes that are currently in the hundred year floodplain if they were to be damaged. Uh, where somebody would come in and rebuild there, there'd be, need to be changes to the grading or the building structure, uh, to, to harden those up or to raise them out. Um, a lot of the other changes to this ordinance are really just verbiage, uh, using, uh, specific terms, uh, proposed by the D N R. Uh, so it's really that free board base. That's the biggest change. Uh, here and again, our target would be to get to ten fifteen percent discount for insurance and we can continue to. Make revisions to our ordinance and take other actions, um, that could get a higher discount rate. Uh, but this would get us through the certification process. Uh, and get this ordinance in front of FEMA to review and start scoring, uh, the city of Windsor Heights for, uh, joining that C S. CRS program potentially late this year or more likely sometime next year. Um, John is attached to memo. Uh, John, you're also online. Do you have any additional comments you want to add? Adam, if you could make sure that John Callen, uh, is unmuted as well.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So the only couple of things I would like to add, uh, that was a really good summary. Uh, the, one of the purposes of going to the, uh, higher free board standard is it gets more points in CRS. So that was. One of the reasons to do that, uh, since most of the community has developed already. The relative impact of that is, uh, considered to be low. The other thing I wanted to note is that. Adam mentioned that this. If a home is substantially damaged in this, uh, or a building, existing building. Substantially damaged, then this standard could come into play. But for any like minor modifications to existing buildings. That are not substantial improvements. Generally speaking, those won't be impacted. Um, so just some details.
And John, remind us, uh, substantial damage is more than fifty percent, uh, of the values, of the structural values. Is that correct?
So, uh, as it's in the ordinance, that's correct for non-flooding damage. Uh, flood related damage has a lower, uh, substantial damage group, uh, threshold. Um, which is also a CRS, a thing that will get more CRS points. So it's twenty five percent of flooding damage over a ten year period.
I'll be honest, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So twenty five percent of a house in ten years that has had flood damage. Then. What happens versus like fifty percent? Tornado or deratio or fire go through. Is that kind of how we're differentiating these two things?
That's correct. So the, the higher standard, which is the minimum federal standard is. Fifty percent of the pre-damage market value of the building. Uh, so that is what it is for all the potential damage sources that are not flooded. And for flood, there's a higher standard that's based on a lower percentage over a specific time period.
And then you also talked about, so if somebody in the floodplain were to remodel their house or do some extensive work. Do they have to comply with all of the flood? Like do the flood mitigation or is that because they're just remodeling, they don't have to do it that?
So that, that is what's called a substantial improvement determination. And so. The answer to the question depends on the scope of the remodel. And certain, certain types of improvements, say like re-carpeting. Or something like that that doesn't require a building permit. Or typically it's just aesthetic. That's, that's not really considered. The ma- more major things like. You know, full scale remodels that are go through the building permit process or additions, those would be considered. And then those are, um. Fifty percent over a ten year period. So similar. Similar concept to substantial damages called substantial improvement. If it is a substantial improvement, it has to meet the standard. If it's not, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or AJ or John? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
In, uh, five D consideration of the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty four oh three governing sidewalk regulations. Uh, any thing changed since last time? AJ?
Uh, no public comments been received. Would just note that Andy and Nate have been working and got the letters out to any residents in area one that have deficiencies. Uh, so they've been notified. And then there's also a webpage that has been set up on the city's website with a whole. Array of information, uh, for residents on how to repair, uh, costs, the grant program, uh, a lot of information related to sidewalks and. Uh, any frequently asked questions that might have for this process. So. Uh, that's gone out in anticipation of, uh, the third readings and trying to stay as close to the typical annual schedule as we'd like to going forward.
All right. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Five E consideration of the third reading of twenty twenty four oh two related to stormwater drainage. Any changes AJ?
Only note, uh, intention is to get a letter out to, uh, the highest water users tomorrow, uh, presuming that this ordinance, uh, passes its third reading.
Questions, comments?
Will this also go out then on social media once, just for the regular folk, not the people that have the high, whatever.
The next Des Moines water bill will include, uh, a, a sentence or two in there that notifies residents of the pending. Uh, fee change and we can certainly do some social media information as well.
I get mine electronically, like I don't read it at all. Uh, I just know that every month it's the same amount of money. So unless that money has, unless it's gone up. I'm not looking at the bill. So.
For July first, you'll find out.
I would find out how much it goes up and I'll question Darren and his water usage. And how much he's watering my plants, but you know.
But as a resident, I mean, it's going to go up, uh, very minimally for you as a one E R U.
Like I said, I'll question Darren on his water and not remember this. So I just, you know, for people like me that do get it electronically that don't ever read. I know that sounds horrible of me, but it's always the same within like ten cents. So. You know, maybe we can do something just to. Make them aware of it.
We could put something in the newsletter too.
Make some space in the newsletter potentially?
Next month, because then that will be closer to. So it'd be right before. So it'll be in the next.
That's what I meant. So not, not the current one you're.
Yeah.
People like me can remember and not blame Darren for watering my flowers.
I'm sure you, I will also be blaming Darren for watering, no. Pretty much. Maybe you have a leak somewhere, Susan.
Exactly.
Lakey, bossa.
Further, uh, further questions or comments?
Thanks for writing up that. Note for us. I appreciate it.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Reports, Ms. Harms.
Um, had a wonderful stroll through Colby Park yesterday. Lots of great, um, uh, progress, I would say, happening over there. So, um, pleased to, to see all of that. Um, otherwise. Which Mac is next week? I think. It's Mac next week or is it tomorrow?
Not tomorrow.
Not tomorrow. It's next week. I couldn't even find my packet for tonight. So if that makes you feel better. It's been a little bit of a, um, a whirlwind, but, um, that's all I've got.
Um, thanks to Susan for pulling off Earth Day. It was a well attended event. Uh, heard lots of wonderful things. Joseph volunteered, Teresa was there and her, her and her girls jumped in. Um, I think it went really well. Uh, first movie in the park was a success. Calling it a success is probably an understatement. It was. Uh, really well attended. We ran out of pizza twice. Um, thanks to the association, fire association for, um, sponsoring. And for doing all the hard work of handing, handing out pizza. And, um, there's actually a tradition that the first sponsor of the movie. Has to hand out pizza the whole series. So we'll see you guys at the next one too. What can I say? You guys work efficiently and you work fast and we appreciate it. So.
Not only that, but they voluntold significant others.
Correct. So, and also shout out to Mayor Jones for making that one, but two pizza runs to get extra pizzas. We ran out of slices. And, um, not sure if your car still smells like pepperoni pizza, but, uh, if it does, you're welcome. That's all I got.
And thanks to Lauren for, um, creating the, uh, five oh three two four. Got a lot of social media play and people really. Spread it out there and it was a kind of a fun, little cool thing to.
I wish we would have thought about that ahead of time and been able to have done more with that. Where were your girls at like a month ago?
I don't know. They just came home and told me.
I mean, I'm just.
I gotta tell somebody. We should do something about this.
Movies in the park was really nice and, and the new location or that location. I think, I think really brought people together and, uh, it was. It, it was a nice event and yeah, it was like locusts with the pizza hat. And, um, I had to leave, uh, at sundown because of Shabbos, but, um. I was, I was so impressed and thank you, chief. You guys did a great job, man. It was, it was wonderful. We have an upcoming economic development committee. Once we get back from D M D C. Uh, and we're looking forward to that agenda that we've blocked off time for a number of meetings there. Central Iowa Business Conference is happening on May twenty third. Uh, with the Urbandale Chamber is hosting that. It'll be at Prairie Meadows on the twenty third, eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night. Some great, great speakers coming and it is a positive event for networking among. Uh, so many people and partly personal, uh, today is, uh, Yom HaShoa, which commemorates the destruction of. Six million Jews during World War Two. And, uh, so there's that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jones? Thanks for reminding us of that. Appreciate that. Well, bear of bad news. The, um, Dart public hearing happens since our last meeting. Uh, and of course you've all seen now that the N P O have voted to give money to support Dart. So. Uh, through that, we're able to keep our budget as we planned for the next two years. So we had a public hearing and approved the F Y twenty five budget. Um, as you know, as things progress, we'll be along with Des Moines, the only two that will be both at our max levy rate. And also paying something extra. Our something extra is not as large as others. But, um, still again, appreciate everyone's support for what public transit means to the metro. And so it makes it easy for me to go and chat about, you know, what it is that we want and how we want to work with everyone to, to do it. So we have another, um, Dart meeting tomorrow, um, and then hoping to have some good conversations out in DC as well. Um, tomorrow we're going to have some deep discussion about how we move forward. Um, and talking about what this great plan to, uh, evaluate, um. What Dart is and what it means to all the member communities and, and how we assess it. Um, and so there'll be a, a good discussion. Hopefully what will come out of it will be. A way that we can move forward on agreeing that something that we all care about is metro. And how are we going to work toward actually sustaining it? So fingers crossed. Lauren can go.
I think what's really important about that, Joseph, and I know that everybody knows this, but it brings economic development into our community.
Absolutely.
That is what it, that's its delivery for us as a community more than people who. Utilize it that are residents. It's more about.
Yeah.
People that come and shop here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Skiers?
Um, I've been busy this week from Friday on and I recovered on Saturday and. So I didn't, uh, write anything out, but thank you to everybody who did Earth Day. Um, didn't have as many people as I wanted, but the weather was not in our favor at all. Um, I don't feel bad because other areas didn't have the numbers that they were expecting either. So. I don't feel like I was, you know, at fault for not having, you know, three hundred people at the event, but. Thanks to Public Works for being out there and for, um, helping Metronet and the residents that. Came through and cleaned up. They did a lot of work. So definitely appreciate that. I think there were a lot of garbage bags filled with. Junk from the, yeah, I'm not sad that I didn't make that event. But, uh, thank you for, to the, the association, the firefighters association, like Lauren said, for the Super Mario's brother sponsorship. Um, I counted three hundred and twelve people at the event and that's with trying to figure out bopping heads. So I took about ten away because I think I counted a few the same, but. Um, definitely looking at some new ideas on how we can make sure that we don't make Mike run fifteen times to Marcos and. You know, be the, the delivery person for us, but, um, looking forward to May thirty first, which is touch a truck event. And that is from five P M, seven P M. And hopefully we will have that same large number and, uh, then June seventh, we have. Um, the Goldfish Academy or Goldfish, uh, swimming. Swimming group, school, uh, they're coming out to do some water safety for us. I like to have some educational part. So this week or this movie, uh, we have the Des Moines Public Library out. Then we'll have the, the goldfish school out for, um, swimming and for water, um, safety. Uh, I haven't figured out in August yet, but still working on that. So if anybody has any ideas, that would be great. Um, so other than that, I think that's it.
AJ?
Uh, for the upcoming DC trip, for those who are going, um, just a reminder, airport parking is a little challenging right now. So. Uh, you're best off getting there early or planning on parking across the street. Uh, or taking Uber. Uh, the Chamber and or B M I Bolton Mink, uh, may be joining us in some of our, uh. Meetings with, uh, our representatives or senators, um, so those, everyone should have received an outlook invite for those. If you haven't seen those. Uh, shoot me a message. I'll forward it back to you. Seventy third street, uh, began today, I think, as everybody was aware. Uh, the overlay is already out for the most part, it looks like. So the contractors, uh, making some quick progress there. Uh, just another update. If you remember, we sent a while back, uh, a link to Laserfish. Uh, that is the new, uh, online document. Uh, just another update. If you remember, we sent a while back, uh, a link to Laserfish. Uh, that is the new, uh, online document, uh, repository that we're working on. Uh, we've got eleven hundred documents that have been scanned in the last couple of months there. So resolutions, ordinances, permits, a lot of that information is starting to become available, um, through that system. So, uh, feel free to hop back on there if you have a question on something, that's a, a resource that's available to you. I think we're, we're learning. There's a lot of documents that we have in paper format. So this is probably going to be an ongoing thing for the next year, at least as we continue to try to, to scan things. So Adam's been learning a lot about Laserfish and, uh, how to categorize and organize stuff because
It's a great program.
It's, it's, there's a lot to it.
Once we take it up and running and understood, it's amazing program. I thought this. We're getting there. We're getting.
Trust you.
Uh, thanks to Public Works today. We had, uh, Metronet, uh, down at Colby. They've, uh, pulled the fiber into the CEC building. Uh, they should be back tomorrow to try to get, uh, the fiber up and running to Public Works in the CEC. Uh, and then we'll have public wifi, uh, at the CEC as well. So Andy and Jason, we're trying to fish fiber through, uh, tiny conduit holes, uh, through the CEC. So unexpected, uh, duties today to them. And thank you for getting that done. Uh, and then Jason, I know you had, uh, an idea maybe for movies in the park coming up here, just as far as safety and road closures. I don't know if you wanted to share that for feedback.
Yeah.
Jason Roberts, Public Works Director for City of Windsor Banks. Um, so yeah, uh, hats off to everybody. Um, you know, great turnout for the very first, uh, movie in the park. So I was actually there as a parent with my child. So I was not working, but working. Um, I thought it was really good. I think it's in a great location where we're having it and um, Susan and myself and Adam, we've kind of talked about it a little bit, you know, as like the lighting down there, I think it was a little bit dark. Um, so I think we've got a solution there that we're gonna try for the next time. But my one concern is, is there's so many people in that area, right? They're, they kind of fell on the backside of where the trees are and the sidewalks and the traffic that goes through there. And I'm not saying everybody was speeding, but we had a few goofballs that were going a little bit excessive down through, through there. So I was thinking getting your thoughts about maybe potentially closing off the road, kind of blocking it off in, in those areas.
So school street between sixty-eighth and sixty-ninth?
Yes.
And then no parking by police order on sixty-ninth to get traffic in and out of the parking lot. So.
So people would have to, they went down sixty, they'd want to have to turn around.
Yeah.
Are they, 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 they could still go, they could still go left.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So they couldn't park at all at sixty-ninth? Is that what you, what we're getting at? Or not park within like two or three driveways of the stop sign?
Exactly. Yes.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just really concerned that, you know, some little kid, you know, not every parent, you know, keeps the best eye on their kids. It's like free range out there. Be quiet and whatever. But, you know, I mean, kids, they see things and they go out. So.
See, is there only one driveway in that area?
There's one that Corbin Blankenship. And then if you'd go, the next one is that daycare one. If you go towards Walmart.
Right. Okay.
And they, neither one of them normally have issues with having their, the one even has a driveway on the other side. So they could utilize that.
So just for, for, I mean.
Are you thinking that this should happen for touch a truck also?
I'm afraid that I, I mean.
Cause we're gonna be.
I, I think you're gonna probably double it probably. I really, I really have a feeling that it, that it could double, especially if the weather holds up and it's nice. I mean, yeah, I think it's gonna be a big event.
There are a way that we could have a little logistical meeting prior to, um, May thirty-first. So we can figure out where we're parking vehicles. And then if we have to have chief put down, you know, no parking, that Public Works, you guys, we all have an opportune time to get the information out to public, that type of thing.
Get something set up, I think.
Thank you.
And then I did, I did forget, um, we received, I received a, a voicemail from, uh, Jeff with Fun Flicks, the gentleman that has done, that we donated money to since his, um, home was, uh, part of those that were, um, through the tornado path from Omaha through. Um, he said, this is Jeff with Fun Flicks. I just wanted to call and thank you and give you a thank you for the gift card. That was so incredibly nice of you guys. I can't say how much we appreciate that. I have no words. My family has no words. I just have no words to express how thankful we are for the gift card. I really, really appreciate it. You make me feel special. Thanks.
Aww.
Good job, team.
Great idea, Susan.
Other than, uh, the police and fire report.
Both adjourned. Oh. Oh. No, I wasn't like, I didn't know we were like really showing. I thought we were reading.
James, me, Switzer Heights Fire Chief. Uh, I just wanted to take a quick minute to give you a twenty-two or twenty twenty-three kind of just year review. Um, as most of you know, uh, twenty twenty-three presented this with the new city administrator, police chief, and I chief, uh, and at the end of the year, all of us had less than six months' experience in those positions. Um, as you all know, my position started with the, uh, failure of our ambulance.
Right.
And so we were out of an ambulance for three months. We had to struggle through that. Uh, we did collaborate extensively. That's one of the things I love about Mr. Heights is we all collaborate with each other, help each other through things. Um, public safety, uh, continues to have an unmatched teamwork environment between FD and PD. Uh, it's like nothing I've ever seen on any other, uh, public safety team. I've, I've never seen, uh, departments collaborate like we do. Um, I thoroughly enjoy it. I like, thank chief for that. Uh, we had multiple, uh, major fire incidents in calendar year twenty-three and a gunshot wound that had intervention that saved that life. Uh, so, uh, the two were in town and we had multiple outside. Two in town is a banner year for us, uh, with our residents. So, um, it's not in a good way. Um, I presented to and you guys located a new staffing model that eliminated the captain's position and got us a part-time position for twelve hours during the day. Um, thank you for that. I think it's made huge improvements on our, uh, uh, service delivery model and it gave me the opportunity to backfill positions that were on vacation or sick leave. Uh, aggressive training and maintenance plans were started. Uh, I had two of our full-time staff kind of take over EMS and fire training and one of our full-time staff oversee our maintenance program. Um, I felt them accountable. They've done great jobs in making sure that our fleet's ready and our people are ready. Uh, again, those are new assignments for full-time staff. All of them got something additional when I came here, uh, and they've all taken that in stride. Uh, call your, call logins remain consistent about a thousand calls a year. Uh, I don't see that uptick in down the road too much, but as our, uh, our citizens age, we, we will get a little bit more call volume and we're gonna get the department complex. I anticipate an uptick from that too. Um, so with our, uh, staffing change, uh, prior to May first, so January to, uh, May first, fifteen percent of the time, we only have one person in station at one point or another. Uh, since May, two people, hundred percent of the time. We haven't had a single time where we had less than two people here. Um, and that was, uh, obtained by your decision to increase or change our staffing model. Seventy-eight percent of the time, we have three people during the day during that part-time shift. That's outstanding percentage. I'm super happy with it. And I expect this to be the next year's annual report in the eightieth percentile. Um, I'll continue to, uh, gauge our part-time staff and add it as needed and replace those as needed. Um, and we also integrated the flood mitigation plan. Again, another collaborative effort that I'm very proud of and I'm glad we did. Uh, we did start another POC program right at the tail end of the year. Those POCs are now carrying into this year. And, uh, we've got probably seventy-five percent of our POC shifts still that night, which is awesome. I'm hoping we can maintain that. We'll see. Um, and before I stop talking, I just want to make sure that I thank, uh, those who have helped me through this process of being a new fighter chief, obviously Adam and Adam. Uh, Rochelle, a huge shout out. She helped me immensely when I first started getting me through this. Chief Rob has also been somebody that I lean on for advice and guidance. So, uh, and obviously all of you, thank you for the opportunity to do this. Glad I'm here. And, uh, if you need anything, do you guys got any questions?
I certainly appreciate, this is really an in-depth report and.
Doesn't feel like it. I just got pushed a little bolt.
Yeah, well, reading through the entire thing, it, there's, there's a lot of stuff there and.
If you, if you want something else in there, please let me know. I'm kind of using this as a, actually what I did was I left it with Chief McCluskey had and said, I'm gonna do something kind of like that. Me and chief worked on this together, um, over a couple of weeks, just making sure we had a good product for you and recommendations from our boss. Thank you for those. And.
Good stuff.
Yeah. If you guys want anything more, just please let me know. Let me and chief know what you think there.
Thanks for all your work and for pulling all this together. And I think it was a good reminder like how much life has happened, but like how much time all of us spent with one, two, three, four fires and wow. But it feels like you've been here forever now.
One thing that I did put in that I wish hindsight twenty twenty was Windsor Heights Fire and police do a really good job of being aggressive with PR. And I didn't touch on that in the report, something to think about next year, but I'm really proud of the, the PR that, that our departments do. Served so long in Thunder. I'm just wondering how much time you got to talk. So, so next year you can anticipate something a little more aggressive as far as talking about our PR events that we go to. So I guess something separates us from a lot of bigger departments.
And I think also the social part, that's the social media posts that, of all the continuing education stuff and.
Yep. You can thank Brett Marceal for that. He's one of our great, uh, full-timers. And that's one of the things I, I'm not, I've done a couple of posts on there, but Brett carries the heavy load for us and he does a great job. And that's why I have him.
It's awesome. You recognize the strength of your team and you.
Oh, yeah.
Delegate. And that's what leadership's all about. So.
They carry me around all the time. So.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Thank you, Jim.
Side of the.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a tough act to follow.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Council. I went to his police department. Uh, I won't really go over what the chief said here real quickly, but I just wanted to thank everybody uh, for their assistance in putting this report together and for all of you, for all your support for our department, especially our public safety committee and our citizens who've been very supportive. Uh, we've had a lot of challenges in twenty twenty-three that we've overcome with staffing, staffing reductions and, and levels not being fully, um, our patrol, uh, division not being fully, uh, I guess I could say stabbed again, but so that's why the numbers have gone down from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-two, about fourteen percent reduction in calls for servers. But we were down about thirty percent of our patrol division during, at one point during the year with injuries, retirements and, uh, training. So, uh, that kind of reflects at those numbers. Uh, and again, like chief, he said, it's a collaborative effort. We really want to be transparent with what we do. And, uh, we are going to seek more advice in this annual report with our staff, with public safety committee and city staff. So if you have any comments or if you'd like to see something else in there, please let us know. And, um, uh, I guess I don't want to think instead of anything else. Again, just thanks to all of your patience to bringing us together. So.
Chief, thank you. Sure. I, I, I found these statistics throughout the past two years really interesting. And I'm glad that you mentioned one of the issues has been staffing issue, which probably brought some of these down. But, um, yeah, you guys are busy.
Well, I do, I do want to mention one thing too, that, uh, the public safety staff has really rose to those challenges and really, uh, we were never, uh, we answered every call we had. We tried to problem solve everything that seemed before us. We really hate saying no to, to projects, to being on committees. Um, Lieutenant Norris and Albeck have been fantastic. Uh, next year will be even better. We are getting our feet wet with our reporting system and with Westcom and with our fellow colleagues at other agencies. So, um, we're looking for, I mean, it feels like we're already halfway into almost half way into twenty twenty-four. But, um, again, just thank you.
Thank you.
I think you also, not only have the police officers taking care of all of our city, but they've also provided a lot of backup to the other agencies where they might not have asked for it, but they heard the call, they heard what was going on and started moving that way in case they needed the assistance, which other communities do for us as well. But, you know, it's nice to have that, that group of, of that, all the cities kind of working together to help each other so that there's no one officer that is just out there on its own. So that's, that's another good thing that, you know, like the fire department, everybody is working together and only good things happen when you work together. So appreciate that.
Could that switch to Westcom, maybe it'd help us out, knowing what was going on around us as opposed to just Old County traffic too. So that was a really good investment, in my opinion. So thank you for that too.
You can thank pushy Chad McCluskey.
Thanks, babe. Motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Roll call.
Susan Skewes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Florida animal.
Yes.
Yes.